Two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Cupertino City Council, if you would all join us for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Sharif.
Present.
Councilmember Vaden Athan.
Here.
Councilmember Chang.
Here.
And Mayor Paul.
Here. All right, excellent. Our first item was a closed session item dealing with anticipated litigation. There was a motion and the council with Vice Mayor Sinks absent and myself recusing due to geographic proximity directed staff to take further action. And that is the report from closed session. I believe we have a ceremonial item on emergency management and we're very pleased to welcome both our Parks and Recreation Director, although I should correct myself in that the Director is of Parks and Community Services now. Or Recreation, I should say, and Community Services. And we have our new Emergency Services Director or Coordinator Claire Francavilla here. And so, welcome. And I say new with a relative descriptor because you've now been here for a number of months. So, welcome and look forward to hearing your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Jeff Melkus, Director, Recreation, Community Services. It's a pleasure to be able to present to you tonight a state of readiness of our emergency management system. As you may recall, in last year's budget process, you allocated and approved a sum of money that brought us to a budget of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars per year on an annual basis to ready the city in the case of emergency situations. This is an opportunity for us to come back now after a number of months and give you kind of a report card of the progress that we've made and where we're heading in the future. So, without anything else, I'd like to again introduce Claire here for you and she will take you through a presentation on it.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Claire Francavilla and I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for Cupertino OES, Office of Emergency Services. I want to thank you for the opportunity to let me come to talk to you tonight about what an effective emergency services program looks like, the state of readiness of the Cupertino Emergency Services Program, and the way moving forward. I'd like to start off with a definition of state of readiness. The city's state of readiness is the level of preparedness of staff, paid and volunteer, community members and systems to react, recover from, and carry out planned sequences of actions in response to emergency events. The success of our readiness is based on the thoroughness of training and planning and the supplies and support that our services and systems need to be successful. We have Cupertino OES has a new mission statement. Cupertino Office of Emergency Services coordinates effective disaster response and recovery efforts through planning, training, and exercising. We prepare and empower ourselves, response personnel, and our community members to minimize the risks to life, safety, property, and the environment. To meet this commitment to our community, OES will keep emergency plans current, ensure a state of readiness in our Emergency Operation Center, or EOC, train city staff to be emergency and disaster ready, and support our volunteer teams and programs, including community emergency response teams, our amateur radio group, and medical reserve corps. We will prepare our residents and local businesses, organize disaster recovery and relief efforts in cooperation with county, cities, and response and recovery partners, and cooperate with other OES and special districts in our operational area. So far, we've established an emergency management position. We have two halftime support staff. We have the funding in place to effectively run our emergency management program. And we have recruited, developed, and trained local community members to lead our volunteer programs. Preparedness is made up of five core mission areas and the plans and processes we have in place to accomplish those missions. Prevention, which is the capabilities necessary to avoid and prevent a threatened or actual act of terrorism. Protection, the capabilities necessary to secure the homeland against acts of terrorism and man-made or natural disasters. Mitigation, the capabilities necessary to reduce loss of life and property by lessening the impact of disasters. Response, the capabilities necessary to save lives, protect property and the environment, and meet basic human needs after an incident has occurred. And recovery, the capabilities necessary to assist communities affected by an incident to recover effectively. To avoid delays in fulfilling our mission, OES will need the legal authority to develop and maintain our programs, establish an emergency management structure, the development of mission function and responsibility statements, resourcing our program, and the legal protection for our volunteers. Now, let's talk about the five essential functions of OES. Identifying hazards and planning our response, reacting to an emergency, our communication and warning plans, remaining ever-ready to respond, and maintaining an EOC in a state of readiness. Sorry about that. There we go. This is a list of the most probable hazards that could occur. Some are not as pertinent to us as others. For example, we probably don't have to worry about volcanoes and avalanches. But we need to be prepared for everything. To move forward efficiently, it's important that we identify the hazards that are specific to our operational area, their likelihood, and the potential impact on our communities. Then we need to recognize that each type of disaster requires different type of response, mitigation, and recovery activities, and then plan accordingly. Planning our response will rely heavily on our ability to coordinate with county and our first responders, establish resource management planning, and develop city plans such as our Emergency Operation Plan, or our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, Sheltering, and Evacuation Plans. When reacting to an emergency, we will need to efficiently implement the incident management systems, which are FEMA guidelines and the proper organizational structure for our EOC personnel. Activate our EOC, coordinate with local government and partners. Some examples of our partners are Santa Clara County, Fire and Sheriff, our not-for-profit partners, Red Cross and Salvation Army. And we want to make sure we have mutual aid agreements in place as well. There are four areas of focus when reacting to an emergency. Operations and procedures for conducting needs assessments, requesting assistance, and conducting response functions. Logistics determines our capability to sustain emergency operations for the duration of an emergency. An earthquake may only last a couple of seconds, but the response efforts are going to last days, weeks, or even months. And then we move into the recovery phase, which can last even longer. Facilities which identifies pre-designated sites for feeding and sheltering. Finance, being able to financially support day-to-day and emergency operations. Volunteer management and support, providing proper training and credentialing for our volunteers. Our trained volunteers are vital to our response and recovery efforts, and we need their support as much as they need our support. When an emergency event has the potential to impact our community, the most important aspects of communication strategy are speed and maximum citizen reach. At this time, there are several methods of alert and communication in place for our city. We have Reverse 911, Alert Ice, Alert SEC, IPaaS, which is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. Of course, there's social media such as Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor, and then our older traditional methods of communication and communicating breaking news such as television and radio. While our immediate concern will be for the safety of our community members, we have other constituents that we need to reach out to, those that we pass information to and those that we get information from. Prior to a disaster, we will work with our local public and safety officials to create protocols and procedures for how to best work together. First responders and local volunteers will be crucial in our response efforts. We need to identify the best way to communicate before an emergency and in the event of an emergency. The media will be instrumental in helping to communicate potentially lifesaving direction instructions to our community members. Human Resources is responsible for day-to-day communications with employees, and they should assume a similar role as part of our crisis communication team. Advising the public of any hazards and the protective action that should be taken. We also need to establish infrastructure for other types of communication processes. For example, no matter how much we try and prepare our residents, when something happens, they're going to try and call. So, we need to ensure that we have the means to receive a high volume of calls during a disaster. So, we need to plan to staff a call center and then make sure that we communicate and that the call center has the most accurate and updated information to give residents when they call. If able, we need to be sure to update our website. That'll be the first place that our residents, visitors, and the media are going to go to get updated information. Social media will be vital to our processes. We need to ensure our communication plan includes a distribution of alerts via available social media channels. And it's important to build a plan for internal stakeholders to communicate with each other. We also need to make sure that we're able to have a communication plan and strategy that will include visitors in our area. Remaining ready to respond will include getting the right resources to the right place at the right time. Training, which is key and critical to ensure our staff knows what they're supposed to do, when they're supposed to do it, and how they're supposed to do it. Exercises are vital in helping us evaluate our state of readiness and processes. They help us identify our weaknesses, improve our communication plan, and give us a sense of comfort when the time comes, even if that's just a matter of getting to know our team members and the other people that we'll be working in the EOC with and what their disaster responsibilities will include. And not enough can be said about public education. We need for our residents to know the processes that they'll be notified and that they need to be prepared before something happens. Maintaining an EOC. An emergency operation center is an unfamiliar place where uncomfortable officials gather to make unpopular decisions based on incomplete information, allocating inadequate resources for unanticipated requirements in too little time. As you can see, nobody would take credit for writing that particular statement. If you're not laughing or cringing right now, you probably have never worked in an EOC before. I have worked in an EOC before, so I know that this is not the state of readiness that we want for our EOC. Through training drills and exercises, we will know our function and what to do, and we will make the best decisions possible in the best interests of our city. And by updating, preparing, and maintaining at least a semi-functional EOC, we will have a familiar place in which to perform those duties and functions. We will be able to ramp up and begin our response efforts in an efficient period of time. So, what really is an emergency operation center or EOC? It's a central location which provides coordination and executive decision-making in support of incident response and recovery operations. In other words, it's the place where our response team members gather to do stuff, to do good stuff in the best interests of our community members. As you're probably aware, our current EOC is not in a state of readiness. As the city of Cupertino continues to grow, as does our staff, space is tight and the EOC has become a bit of a catch-all. And understandably so, but it does put us in a state of unreadiness. An EOC should be ready for action within two hours of an incident. Through exercises and drills that we've had previously, it's been determined that it would take two to three hours just to clean the space out to begin the setup of our EOC, which means setting up tables and chairs, signage, plugging in phones and computers. We could be looking at four to five hours before we can come in, sit down, and properly care for our residents. Factors to consider when choosing a functional EOC: accessibility, safety, size, system capabilities, survivability, and versatility. There are three levels of readiness for an EOC. There's cold, warm, and hot statuses. Right now Cupertino's EOC is in a cold status, and prior to activation, the room would need to be configured to accommodate EOC activities. We should be ready for activation, bodies and chairs, phones and computers up and running within two hours of an incident. And as I mentioned, in the state that it's in now, our EOC would take four to five hours till activation. To maintain a warm EOC, we must have a facility that's seismically functional and safe, a room cleared of unnecessary unrelated items and remains semi-functional, the infrastructure in place for proper technology, and of course, trained staff. One of one of the most important things that we can do, including those that I just mentioned, would be to identify a secondary EOC location. If something were to happen in our area and our city hall was affected or some way inaccessible by roads being blocked, we would need to have a secondary EOC identified to be able to move our response operations to. I understand that the space is necessary for other functions, but once it was set up and maintained in a state of readiness, not only would it be a source of pride for the city, but it'll make a comfortable meeting and training room. It doesn't need to be, or it shouldn't be left untouched and unused, but it should be ready and available. This slide is a level of readiness for the five functions that we just spoke about. Function one, identifying hazards. Two, reacting to an emergency. Three, the communication and warning plan. Four, remaining ready to respond. And five, maintaining an EOC in a state of readiness. One being the lowest level of readiness and five being the highest. In some areas, we're maintaining and moving forward, and in other areas, we have a lot of improvements to do to become, to be in a state of readiness, such as maintaining the EOC and making sure that we train and exercise our EOC staff. Now, some of our accomplishments, things we've done so far and are working on. Presenting the state of readiness to the City Council. Done, and done. Updated, we updated a basic and advanced training plan for the city staff. Recently, county OES has had some advanced position-specific training for EOC personnel. We've actually had some of our staff attend those trainings, so that's encouraging as we move forward. We rolled out our new emergency communications van. We acquired and are training on artificial intelligence hazard impact software by one concern. We developed a plan to create a substantial and effective emergency operation center. We are finalizing the roster for our EOC personnel. We began the process to update our emergency operation plan. Our local hazard mitigation plan will be coming to City Council in the very near future for approval and adoption. There'll be an Alert SEC presentation to City Council in May. Cupertino will be having its first annual disaster preparedness fair in June, June twenty-third, actually. And we're hoping to develop and implement luncheon learns to engage city staff. The worst thing we can do is train our personnel and then not have engagement activities moving forward, so it'll be a good way to keep them interested in emergency operations and services. So now, the role of City Council. City Council plays a crucial role in public safety. Emergency management is a critical government function from planning and preparedness through long-term disaster recovery and mitigation efforts. Your understanding of what we do and your support is vital to our response, to our response to our city. Before a disaster occurs, you should meet with us, your emergency management team, learn about and support our volunteer programs, and establish solid relationships. Learn about plans and procedures that the Office of Emergency Services would use. This way, when the time comes to respond, you'll be familiar with our team and the proper processes. During times of crisis, you will be a valuable asset to your city. You should have a clear understanding of how government responds to emergencies and disasters, what resources are available, and what types of assistance can be provided to our citizens. Policymakers have responsibility to make decisions that will ensure the safety of their constituents and communities. Be aware of the hazards in your area. Our notification systems can keep you updated with daily situational reports. Work with OES to address immediate needs after a disaster such as curfews and price caps, et cetera. Be prepared to participate in the response and even more especially during recovery. The residents of Cupertino trust you and they will need you in the event of an emergency. And keep management staff advised of contact numbers. We should be able to contact any time during a disaster. Disasters don't always happen during the day, during the week. They happen at night and on the weekends, so we should have twenty-four hour point of contact numbers for everybody. And then my last slide is an objective project planner. You probably can't read it on your screen, but there should be a copy in your packet. And it's just showing you our way forward and the things that we'll be working on. And what you're looking at is a two-year time plan. You'll see a lot of blue lines that don't have a beginning and don't have an end because emergency services are a continual process. We're continually training. We're continually learning the new things. We're continually updating our operation plans and hazard mitigation plans. And so, and supporting our volunteer management teams and making sure that we train. So, those things are continually going on. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions from the council at this point? Councilmember Sharif.
So, in terms of the secondary OES, does the county have one now? I've been to the primary one. But do they have a secondary emergency operations center?
I believe they have a secondary operations center identified. I could not tell you where that is. Not that it's a secret. I just don't happen to know, but they do have a plan in place for that.
So, where could we put one in Cupertino? Is there any place?
I think that's been part of discussion for a long time and part of the issue with having our primary one here in city hall is that there hasn't been one identified as far as I know. And finding a place that's seismically sound and room in Cupertino is a problem and an issue. And finding a place that's seismically sound and room in Cupertino is a problem and an issue.
Well, I don't think the current one is seismically sound, is it?
From what I understand, it is not.
I can add, it might be that we just designate one of the rooms in the community center to be the pull-out-of-the-closet.
You mean in Quinlan?
Yeah, in Quinlan, community center. At least we'll have a place that staff will know that if there is an activation and we can't use this space next door, that then that would be the, we wouldn't be thinking about it at the last minute.
But you still would put in a generator there? I mean, that doesn't cost that much.
No, in the best of all worlds, absolutely, that would be great.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Vadi Natan?
So I remember we had this really nice field trip to the service yard on Mary. Director Boden was there, and there were members of the disaster council, and I was really looking forward to something happening there on Mary Avenue. But I think CalPERS took all our money, so that plan didn't happen. But instead of having a renovation of that scale that we were hoping to have, can we not have a portable there? Can we not have something on a temporary scale which can accommodate an OES? And this be our secondary location?
I think that's absolutely a possibility. It would be a matter of being able to store the equipment that we need to set up the EOC in a convenient place where it's going to be safe and easily accessible should there be an event where we have to activate our emergency center. But that definitely is a possibility.
From what I understood, that location was ideal even for county because it's easy access from the freeway. And I definitely know cell phones work there. I've never had five bars anywhere in the city except there. And there's also a bridge right there, which, not a vehicle, a bridge, but you can still access it, access the location from another city. There are many positives for that location. And as long as it's not used for anything else, you will not have this thing of putting tables back together and then moving food away and people away and then starting an OES. So I think we seriously should think about that.
Yes, absolutely. That's a conversation that I had started with a couple of people over at the service center. And that's when I found out that they did have a plan for that and that money that was budgeted for that had gone elsewhere. So it's definitely a possibility.
Okay. And the other question I had was in one of your slides, for me it's page six, so I don't know what it is for you. It was the communication and warning plans?
Yes.
You have public officials, response, personal media, employees, public. I would like to include our block leaders in here and also have some form of, what's it called in school? Calling tree, where we have some kind of phone numbers, where there's a system which is some kind of a group notification system. So quick information goes to our block leaders and then they are, they probably can have some kind of a calling tree and get to the people in their block really quickly. I went to a training in Santa Clara County, and one of the things that one of their supervisors said was during the flood that San Jose had, everybody else in the county was ready and city of San Jose was ready, but then the information never got to the residents. And they were panicking. And we should not be putting our residents in panic in a situation where they already don't know where their kids are, where their elderly are. So if we can have some process there, that would be great. And the third thing is, I've been attending the disaster council meetings now for over three years, and one thing I've been really pushing for is that SEC alert. It is just not happening. We really need to make that happen. At every event that the city does, have a table, register people, show them. The glitches now, from what I understand, the glitch is, the software glitch that was there is no longer an issue. So we just need to get our residents to register so that when there's an alert, it can get to them really quickly.
Right. Alert SEC is going to be a beneficial communication tool for the city, absolutely. And I recently have been to a meeting, so I'm on a committee right now for how we're going to promote Alert SEC moving forward. And so it's going to be a big push, but we do plan on setting up tables every chance that we get. And at our preparedness fair, we're hoping to get a lot of people there that will actually have computers set up so we can start registering.
Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Councilmember Chang?
During the NAPA file, they're discussing about the, at the beginning of the stage, there is a lot of confusion and the information not getting to the resident. End up is a resident calling the other resident to get out of the house. So in that situation, how are we going to prevent, if there's an emergency situation, there's no confusing, there will be a timely notification to the resident? Are we going to talk, maybe my suggestion, maybe talking to NAPA area to see what they did well, what they did not do well, and learn from that lesson?
Right. So that's a great suggestion, to find out, doing an after-action review and finding out what it is that did work and what didn't work. I think one of the best things that we can have is multiple means of communication and making sure that we put all of those into use. The idea of the block leaders is a great idea, and I apologize for not putting that on the slide because I do believe that we don't use the block leaders as much as we should. It's a great communication tree and process that's in place. And being able to communicate just with those leaders and letting them go out because it breaks it up into smaller chunks and it makes it easier to get out to everybody. So I think just being able to promote the processes we have in place now, incorporating our block leaders, and then finding out what processes worked and what didn't work would be a good place to start, absolutely.
The other part is with the new technology now, now we are facing the problem with fake news spreading much faster than the real news. So any way or anything we're doing to help not to let that happen? I mean, it's so unbelievable when you listen to NPR, for example, the shooting in the church in Austin. And there's a group called Conspiracy Theory Group, and they're spreading the word that it never happened. Even the pastor, his daughter got killed in the church, and so many people got killed. And this group of people can still lie and then still make up and then spreading the word, say there's no killing at all. So I'm just wondering how I want to deal with this kind of new sickness of this society here, so.
Hi.
I think one solution to that is, as was suggested, to really focus on the alert, the 911 backwards program, as I call it. And right now, we're only about 15% of residents, I think if that, that are signed up. We need to make that a real important priority, and we've already been talking quite a bit about how to do that, working through the schools and other ways of getting people to engage with that. And then we know that when the information comes, it's from the credible source, it's coming directly from the city.
Okay, thank you. Great. I have no questions. Are there any cards from the public wishing to speak on the item, Madam City Clerk? I think there might be one.
I just want to add one other thing there, if I may.
I'll bring it back for comment, if you wanted to make a comment, after the public commentary. Just oral communicate, I think there was one member of the audience who's indicating that she was wanting to speak on this item. So Jennifer, come on up and please fill out a blue card after you're done. Our speaker on this is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, city council. I'm glad that this was an excellent presentation. And I'm very glad that you all are taking things like this very seriously, having gone through the Loma Prieta earthquake in Cupertino. It is very, very important that we maintain local control and communication everywhere. I will assume that in an emergency situation like that, we would be reaching out to the Apple campuses, both of them, to D'Anza College and to any other, and to the quarry, because they are going to be establishing command centers in their own areas. My friend actually was working at Digital at the time of the Loma Prieta earthquake, and she was part of, because she had first responder training, she was actually part of their disaster team that went out at DEC. So I think the other thing I was going to say is, I don't know if you all mentioned this, that Cupertino, I believe, has an emergency radio channel that will be activated. I don't, I hear it often when I'm, I used to drive Quito to get onto 17, and I would hear it often coming on, I mean, on the radio in the car. I mean, you'd hear this interesting, you know, and it would say, this is the emergency channel for either Los Gatos or Cupertino. And I can tell you, when there were issues, especially with storms, damage, et cetera, having that emergency channel available, coming in, especially on car radios, is a very, very important point of communication. Because a lot of times, you may be out driving in areas and something will have happened. And the car, I mean, I use my car radio all the time. It's on, on KCBS actually, most of the time, especially since we lost the other, I believe about two years ago, the other KLIV went to Country Western. Not that I don't like Country Western, but we lost another 24-hour emergency channel, and they used to carry all the coverage of 17. KCBS has had to step up and start doing that. But when a disaster happens, you may be out in your car somewhere in the middle of the night. And having that bandwidth, I don't know how it works, come in. I believe that there's actually a sign somewhere that says, I think it's on Quito, and you can actually, it says, tune to this station for emergency updates. If you all could talk about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, let's bring it back up to the dais. Are there any further comments from the council? I know that, Savita, Councilmember Vadi Natan?
I just had another request because I remember way back, this is again two and a half to three years ago, we were discussing a regional OES. So I know Sunnyvale has its own really well, it's very well planned. But I don't know if the cities of Saratoga and Los Altos have their own, and if we could think about setting up something that's regional. That could be another way of sharing our resources and budget.
We've been in discussions with Saratoga, Los Altos Hills, and Los Gatos to a lesser extent about making a regional EOC. So far, we haven't found a location that's really suitable or that we all agree on yet, but we're still talking about it.
But we do have a process where we inform the schools, in this, people to communicate with.
Oh, yes, of course. And we also, Jennifer, right, we do have a radio station and it goes into emergency mode when there's an emergency.
Thank you. Those are the comments I had.
Great. Any other comments from council? No? Well, I do have a couple of comments with regard to the outreach and the partnerships and collaborations. I agree with our speaker from the public that we should be outreaching to our major corporation here. It's a very significant source of people during the work week, and it's something that we can be doing to fortify our relationship with Apple. It's something that also makes a lot of sense because, of course, they have modern facilities. And, you know, whatever they're doing in terms of emergency response would naturally affect the city and vice versa. And so I would ask that you put that on your list as well in terms of cultivating those partnerships. Expanding upon what Councilmember Vadi Natan said with regard to the schools. This is also critically important, especially given the fact that we're such an educationally oriented community outside of the industry and technology sector. So I would like to see more coordination with CUSD, FUHSD, as well as the Fodil D'Anza Community College District with regard to any number of items that you were speaking about. But, you know, pretty much any disaster that would affect the community would be affecting a very significant number of people that are going to be found within the schools. And those are our kids, you know, essentially. And I think more than anything else, the residents of the community would like to have a really good and well-developed conduit between, for instance, our public information officer here in the city and our emergency management coordinator, and then outward to the schools. And I think given the fact that they control so many of the facilities around the community as well, that could very well expand your potential locations for looking at EOCs and such. So, you know, you could be looking at a lot of different, you know, spaces for precisely the types of, you know, I guess, lack of facilities that you're finding, you know, thus far in your tenure here. And the other thing that I would say is that we do have, you know, city facilities that it might make sense to, you know, examine. This building itself was built relatively recently, you know, compared to City Hall certainly. And I have heard members of the community mention, well, we do have space behind the dais here. Why not, you know, have some storage of certain equipment so that we could set up, you know, something akin to an EOC? And so I also echo the idea that our corporation yard should be looked at. I mean, it's not a matter of not having the funding now. I mean, we'll probably be able to come up with the funding in the midterm as well. So certainly, if we're looking at it and it's such an ideal location and it has good, you know, reception and coverage, there is a plan in place that actually designs out a state-of-the-art EOC there. I mean, I think it would be a bit premature to, you know, essentially, take that off the list as possibilities for EOCs. So those are my comments. You know, hopefully you can follow up and, you know, fortify those connections with, you know, our major business. You know, and the businesses in general for that matter, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce, but, you know, other means. Our director of economic development should have a more comprehensive list of the businesses in the community as well. So it would be good to see, you know, within the staff that interconnection so that you can, you know, more effectively, you know, discharge the requirements of your job. So it's great to have you on board. I haven't seen as thorough an examination of our emergency services and readiness status. It's a bit alarming to see on a scale of one to five that our premier item is only at a three, and most are at a two, and the EOC is at a one. So, you know, certainly, we would be happy to put our support and resources, I think, behind your ongoing efforts.
Yeah, I just like that we actually do interface with our Apple's emergency service manager fairly regularly. So, and she was helped with the last draft of our EOP. So it is important, they're actually, they have some very, very good facilities, and I think they've got good plans too. But they're very much focused on their employee safety, not so much the greater community.
Absolutely. You know, and while we're on that general topic, I mean, I would say that, you know, there has been talk more recently in the news about repatriation of resources from abroad. And, you know, locally in the valley, you see, you know, stations like Jennifer pointed out, KLIV, which was a news station, long-running, family-owned, I mean, those types of amenities are declining in our community, kind of alarmingly. And so certainly, if you have a bucket of resources as well as a need in the community, I mean, if we were going to turn on the Cupertino broadcast channel on the radio, I don't even know what, I should know, but, you know, the radio station numbers, it's not necessarily something that people are typically listening to and have their radio, you know, set to. But something like KLIV where it was, you know, all news, you know, people listened to that on the way to work and on the way back. I mean, it's something that, if you're reaching out and trying to do something for emergency services and trying to get communication to people on an immediate basis, in addition to alert SEC, you know, and making sure that those reverse 911 mechanisms are in really good, you know, condition. I think, think about the way people actually use media, even the older media such as radio. I mean, they're still pretty well utilized. And if we had more of that kind of broad-based mechanism that, you know, for some reason, you know, wasn't as well financially supported in the modern day where we're trying to synergize with internet, you know, media, if we had that more consistently supported... with internet, you know, media, if we had that more consistently supported, it, it seems like things like emergency management would be in much better condition than it is prospectively at this point. So, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, think about those types of issues as well, as you're representing our city, and reaching out to the various entities around the area.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And just, just so you know, I have actually met with the Emergency Manager myself over at Apple.
Great.
So I look forward to working with them. I believe that we shouldn't wait until there's an emergency before we start introducing ourselves to the people that we need to work with and our constituents throughout the community, so, and still looking for contact over at Deansa, but I'm working on that one.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks, Claire.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
I can help with the Deansa contact, so you can talk offline.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thanks very much. So our next item is oral communications, and actually, before that, we have postponements. But Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no postponements. The next item is for any item that is not on the agenda, if a member of the public would like to speak on it. I have a number of blue cards here for oral communications, and I will read them off by name, three at a time. We have Phyllis Dixtein, Tagi Sadadi, and Anna Gonzalez, our first three speakers. Welcome, Phyllis.
Thank you.
And sorry, Phyllis, I always forget if it's Dixtein or Dick Stein, so I apologize if the...
You can call me Ms. Dee, that's what my students do.
Very good. Well, welcome, Phyllis.
Thank you. Well, after last week's presentation, I'm here today to speak truth to power, putting aside the usual politesse, because what is being done to the residents of Cupertino is incredible. Form-based code has to be off the table. It is a bit of chicanery by which community input is massaged through arcane formulae that only the planners understand, and then spit back to us, telling us that we want this, when we really may want that, while each one of us is made to think that he himself is the outlier. Now, various city officials, elected, appointed, and hired, seem to advocate high-rise densification. Is it because they are aware that the general public is not likely to be in agreement, that they resort to evasions, avoiding relevant straightforward issues in favor of la-dida principles such as heart and soul? Yet, if you truly want to manifest the views of the residents, an honest poll is really very simple. First, you start with the premise that Valco is already zoned, and was so when San Hill bought it. The council itself has voted modalities by which zoning can be changed, and they are not FBC. And zoning protects the community. It is only broken from the perspective of those who would derive enormous profits from changing it radically. So the relevant issues for any poll are the elements of zoning, not anima eccore, permitted uses, heights, density setbacks. For each element, give the current zoning, and then ask specific questions about proposed changes, with a box for comments after each question. Participants need to be registered, and the poll open to residents, business owners, CUSD parents. Results should be presented separately by group, and then possibly aggregated. If you want to poll ten thousand Apple employees who do not live here, or ye bees residing in San Francisco, these are separate polls, and the data should never be aggregated into those of the residents. Can the city council accept an honest, straightforward poll? If not, why are some of you so invested in something that you fear your constituents may not want? Opticos, if any of you are here tonight, you are professionals. Please do not compromise your professionalism in the service of deceiving the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Our next speaker is Tagi Sadadi, followed by Anna Gonzalez, followed by Tara Srikrishnan. Welcome, Tagi.
Good evening. I was here a month ago, on February twentieth, regarding the R1 ordinance, two requirements. One was the garage requirement, that states a twenty-foot garage, and I was proposing the change to, for certain situation to eighteen foot. And the other one, secondary unit, has too many requirements, and one is ten percent. And Councilmember Rod Singh apparently brought that subject up also, and he may be the one who suggested the ten percent, I'm not sure. But I suggest that that be changed to maybe fifteen percent. Because previous requirement was seven hundred fifty square foot, and went to, or six fifty, and then went to eight hundred square foot, now it's down to, there are four requirements. One is the forty-five percent, another one, thousand a square foot maximum. The second one is fifty percent of the existing area, and the third one is ten percent, so there are about four requirements, and this will be simplified. And I followed with the staff, and they haven't received any direction to pursue this matter. And I'd like to request the council to direct the staff to follow this up. And on the garage, I know for a fact that there are some homes that, there were one-story, had a smaller garage than twenty foot, kept one wall, built a two-story house, three thousand a square foot, the garage is still as eighteen foot. By comparison, if a one-car garage is demolished, and a larger garage is built, there's room for four cars, two in the driveway, and two, even one in the garage still makes it three versus a one-car garage with allowing only one car in the driveway. And a lot of people don't park in the garages anyhow, probably half the people do. So I would appreciate if you'd direct the staff to follow this up, and I'd be more than happy to work with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tagi. Our next speaker is Anna Gonzalez, followed by Tara Srikrishnan, followed by April Nicholson. Welcome, Anna.
My name's Anna, and some of you may recognize me. I go to Deansa College, and I organized the, um, the walkout from Deansa College in support of gun control last Wednesday. But aside from that, if you're wondering, I am not a survivor of a mass shooting, nor do I live in a community afflicted by rampant gun violence. But that is sort of the point why I'm here today. Because under the current state of gun control laws in our country and gun culture that in our country, we are all at risk, especially students like myself, and like the high school students in this area. I still remember in two thousand and eleven, I was in seventh grade, and there was a shooting at Cupertino Quarry, and the shooter at the time became an active shooter in our own backyards, and my school was put on lockdown, probably because they knew that a school would be a prime target for an active shooter. Since then, I and the rest of the world have seen shooting after shooting afflict our public, but now is the time for this not to happen any longer. Last Wednesday, the walkout I organized at Deansa College had about two hundred participants. Across this city, there were high schoolers from many different schools, including Mona Vista and Cupertino High School, who hosted their own seventeen-minute walkouts, at risk of whatever their administration would decide to punish them with. And a Nextdoor poll, can I show this on the document camera? There we go. A Nextdoor poll organized by Tara in the Mona Vista neighborhood actually had three hundred sixty-six responses, and eighty percent of Cupertino residents supported pretty strict gun legislation of an outright ban of assault rifles. So, right now, we have the passion, the mobilization, and the momentum to pass strict gun legislation. This is a national movement. This is more than just this area, or California, or Cupertino. But Cupertino students specifically are impassioned, and Cupertino parents are worried for their children's lives. My friend April, who will be speaking after me, will be indicating several options for possible legislation, including adopting the progressive Sunnyvale laws that were passed and approved in an appellate court, and also taking another look at the gun ordinance that failed to pass last year. Cupertino can be a leader for city response to this issue. All we ask today is for this issue to be a priority in the next city council meeting and the Public Safety Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And our next speaker is Tara Srikrishnan, followed by April Nicholson, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Hello, city council members. Mayor Paul, I also wanted to speak about the walkout. Hundreds of Deansa College activists and high schoolers participated last week. Sometimes, in these emotionally intense conversations, we're eager to jump to a solution, solutions that some of us disagree on, that are often politically charged, and we lose sight of our common goals. And our common goal is preventing gun violence and mass shootings. So it's just important to keep that in mind, as we discussed holistic approaches. But in the end, we don't just want a discussion, we want legislative action. So April will speak on the potential ordinance that went to the Public Safety Commission last year, as well as Sunnyvale City Council, which is looking at increasing the age minimum to purchasing an assault rifle to twenty-one. So these are things we can all discuss. And from our research, there are no firearm sellers currently in Cupertino. The last gun store closed last year, but they could still pop up. So thank you, and thank you to all of the students that participated in the walkout.
Thank you, Tara. Our next speaker is April Nicholson, followed by Jennifer Griffin. And so far, the last speaker card I have is from Kitty Moore. Welcome, April.
Hello. I'm April Nicholson, a second-year student at Deansa. I'm sure you've noticed the mass participation at the high school walkouts countrywide last week, including the ones held here in Cupertino. I myself have participated in the one held at Deansa. Us students have united together not just to show our outrage at the school shootings themselves, but to call lawmakers such as y'all to take action against these preventable tragedies. Cupertino's neighbors, Sunnyvale, have already taken action. Their city council unanimously voted to increase the age to buy guns to twenty-one. The logic was, if one has to wait until the age of twenty-one to smoke or buy alcohol, then they should wait till that age to buy a gun as well. I remember during Deansa's walkout, my friend Anna over there asked if any students in the crowd had imagined a scenario where their school faced a shooter, and the majority of the crowd had raised their hand. Here in Cupertino specifically, the local schools consist of world-class education, I mean, yeah, world-class education in elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and even Deansa, two-year community college. Cupertino is the forefront of education in this country, and its students deserve to be protected as they strive to learn. A Nextdoor poll that Anna showed earlier was conducted here in Cupertino to consult Cupertino residents of their thoughts of a gun age law, and eighty percent of the residents out of three hundred sixty-six supported an outright ban on assault rifles, fourteen percent supported a minimum age of purchase of twenty-one, and only six percent did not want to outright, outright ban guns or raise the minimum age. The majority of Cupertino residents polled want some sort of gun regulation on assault rifles implemented here, and it's your duty to make sure that their wishes are granted. Last year already, you've drafted an ordinance that got shot down, that would require the lock storage of firearms, a ban of magazines that could hold more than ten rounds, and record-keeping requirements for ammunition sales. I urge you to rethink your stance, your stance on gun laws in light of this national issue. And if we create stricter gun laws here in Cupertino, arguably one of the most influential cities in Silicon Valley, will be pioneers in making gun control the new norm here in the United States. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Kitty Moore, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. I think it's, can you hear me now? Okay. I think it's appropriate, you all were talking about the EOC and emergency situations in Cupertino and in the area. I wanted to start tonight, to start the conversation about Highway seventeen being expanded from two lanes to three lanes, from Los Gatos at the cats past Bear Creek Road intersection to the summit and on into Scotts Valley. Scotts Valley is becoming a commuter hub. A lot of people are purchasing homes there, and they commute over into Silicon Valley. Some people may live in Silicon Valley and drive over seventeen, you don't know. But having driven this, being driven in this, over seventeen, since I was a child every weekend, to see grandparents and aunts, et cetera, and now as an adult, I go over there at least two days a week, it has become apparent that that road needs major improvements. I do not believe that any major improvements have been made in the section from Los Gatos to, I would say, right after the dam up toward the summit since nineteen forty-seven. I don't know if any of you have driven on it, but when you're sitting, coming down the hill, past the dam, the overflow area, it is like a Disneyland ride. This week, in a, in a space of two hours, there were fifteen major accidents on seventeen. And I mean, we're talking about rollovers, people in going to hospitals, cars running up on the road, I, it's horrific to watch the news. And I don't think anyone understands the volume of traffic that goes over seventeen, but I don't understand why major improvements have not been made. That section of seventeen from the cats up to the summit is in Santa Clara County. I know well where the Santa Clara County and the Los Gatos borders are. The major problems are in Santa Clara County. I understand that there is going to be new overpasses putting in at Glenwood. There's a, I believe, an undercrossing for animals to be going under. And because of the amount of damage from a year ago, with seventeen being shut down, they're actually working, I believe, to have an overpass at Laurel Glen. That's just out of Scotts Valley. I can tell you right now that we need a major overpass at Aldercroft Heights, Graham Hill, a number of other places. I'm not sure what we need to do to expedite this, but it has become apparent that that road needs to be improved. There are major safety hazards, and it's time to start working on it. I think a lot of people would appreciate how we proceed with this, to try to make it more safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Kitty Moore, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Kitty.
Hi, good evening, city council. I hope you all got a copy of my cure for insomnia, comments for Valco Shopping District's specific plan, environmental impact report, forty-nine pages. So I've been reading the general plan, and it talks about the Valco Shopping District. In the Opticos presentations, it's not referred to as the Valco Shopping District, but the General Plan twenty forty calls it the Valco Shopping District. And in it, it says, "This new Valco Shopping District will become a destination for shopping, dining, and entertainment in the Santa Clara Valley." And it will maintain a minimum of six hundred thousand square feet of retail, and it will either allow or encourage office, residential, and/or hotel. So it's only, as I read it, mandating that you need to have retail. And then, when I look at Table LU1, in my opinion, it looks like a general plan internal inconsistency, because you're saying that you're going to have two hundred million square feet of office. And if you do build that, then it's going to make it an office park, and not consistent with the text, in my opinion. The specific plan must be consistent with the general plan, and EIR projects must be feasible. Valco Measure D failed invalid initiative, spending seven million on marketing, and had slightly more retail than the current proposed project. A dead-on-arrival project isn't feasible. Eight hundred residential units would require a general plan amendment or a conditional use permit. In my opinion, you need to stop the study of this particular proposed project, and wait for a feasible project or a general plan amendment submission, and then study that project. So, as a reminder, this is the EIR proposed project from the scoping meeting that we were shown. The result would be fifteen percent retail. It would be larger than Apple Park on one-third the acreage. If a project is inconsistent with an applicable general plan or subsidiary land use plan, it may not be approved without an amendment to the plan or variance. Where a project conflicts with even a single general plan policy, its approval may be reversed. And then you had an alternative to project, which was the two-thirds residential, one-third non-residential. In my opinion, it looks not feasible, it's inconsistent with the general plan, it's not an appropriate alternate to the proposed project, and again, you're going to end up larger than Apple Park. Alternatives to a project must feasibly attain its basic objectives, but would avoid or substantially lessen any of the significant effects. I don't believe the apartment complex would do that. Please halt the EIR process and wait for a feasible proposed project consistent with the Please halt the EIR process and wait for a feasible proposed project consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kitty. Our last speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
So Kitty, along with Phyllis earlier, had brought up tonight things that are ideas and material to express their thoughts, but those also of a lot of residents related to the current and concurrent activities of the Valco EIR study and the specific plan process being led by Opticos. And I just, I feel it's important to let you know, anyone who's watching know, the records show that these are two individuals speaking, but they are speaking for many voices. And that's not just my guess, it's a fact. I've read comments by other people, so I just want to support their statements and make sure that I've done my part in hoping that everyone has listened to what they've said. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. That wraps it up for oral communications tonight. Our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Is there a request to pull any item from consent? Councilmember Scharf?
Yeah, can you pull item nine?
Request to pull item number nine. Is there a request to pull any other item? I'd like to pull item number 10. And are there any other requests from the council or members of the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for items three through eight.
I make a motion to adopt items three through eight of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote with your lights for items three through eight of consent.
Motion carries unanimously with Sinks absent.
Consent item number nine is a master agreement between the city of Cupertino and HMH Engineering to provide civil engineering services on various capital improvement projects, also known as CIPs. Councilmember Scharf, you pulled this item. Would you like to speak on it first?
Oh, I was wondering, it says this contract's for a million dollars. And then, in Exhibit C in the draft agreement, it has a list of hourly rates for various services. So are those in addition to the $1 million contract?
No, no, the $1 million, it's an on-call contract, and the $1 million is just the absolute level of appropriation that can be expensed under this contract.
Oh, so each of these items would be deducted on an hourly basis from that million? And if we didn't use it all up, we don't pay it?
That's correct.
And in the past, have we used it all up?
I think the last master agreement with HMH, yes, we did. This one, we have a couple of projects right now that we will be issuing service orders for them to move forward. That would be the McClellan Road sidewalks, as well as the Burn Avenue sidewalks. So those couple will, I mean, they will begin to eat into that million, but that will, there'll be a lot of capacity left with those.
So how many civil engineers do we have on city staff?
On city staff, we have approximately just five off the top of my head.
But we still need to contract all this?
Right. So what our civil engineers are doing are mostly plan check, project management. You know, we have a city engineer, but we do not do design services with the lean staff that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, great. Councilmember Scharf, would you like to entertain a motion or put forward a motion for this item?
Yeah, one second, let me get that.
Oh, that's fine. And while we're waiting, are there any other comments from the rest of council regarding this item? And I'm assuming there are no public comment cards, Madam City Clerk? All right, I'll take that as a, no, with no blue cards. All right, is there a motion?
Okay, I make a motion, it's not an ordinance, right, to adopt item nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously with Sinks absent.
Item number 10 is the SB 100 Support Letter that we went over previously. Just to put a motion on the table, I would like to move that we approve subject to the ability to make a few typographical edits. So I was reading over the letter and just wanted to be able to have that kind of leeway because the requested action was basically to have me essentially sign it and send it out. I'd like to just be given that flexibility to fix non-substantive typos, essentially. Good? All right, so that's my motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second for discussion.
Okay, great. And Councilmember Vaidy Nathan, you had some discussion?
Since you pulled it out, I just wanted to talk about one of the bullets, which says we will oppose amendments that would give the IOUs control of the distributed energy resources market, including storage and other innovative technologies. How will we come to know about this, and how do we protest?
So I think we rely on the California CCA, which is the Association of Our Aggregators.
So they will inform the SVCE?
Yes, and we will hear back through our representative.
So we get an opportunity to send another letter in case we see anything which...
Oh, yeah. We're watching this from pretty closely.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah. This is just a letter of support that is conditioned on a number of items. And, yeah, you know, no, no, I appreciate it.
We discussed it in detail the last time, but I just wanted to ensure that we have a method of actually opposing it.
Right, right.
Instead of just sending it in this letter.
Yeah, and as a self-contained public document, I'm glad you mentioned IOUs. I was reading over the letter, it doesn't actually identify the precise meaning of IOUs, for instance. So I'd just like to be able to clean up that type of item. So we have a motion in a second. If there's any further discussion, great. If not, Councilmember Scharf?
Well, I still have a concern that we're only trying to get to 60% in the year 2030.
Right.
It's almost like this is a gift to the utilities instead of trying to force them to do something.
Right. And I will note, as a result of your and Vice Mayor Sinks's concerns, there's language in the new draft that essentially states that Cupertino is way ahead of the curve. You know, we're a bit concerned regarding the timetable and would like to see it accelerated if possible. And so I think the letter is certainly an improvement upon our original draft that we had in our prior meeting. But, you know, concern noted, and if there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to call a vote. All right, please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously with Sinks absent.
Excellent. We're now on to second reading of ordinances. Item number 11 is our Social Host Responsibility Ordinance. Mr. City Manager Brant, would you like to introduce the item?
Yeah, this is the second reading of the ordinance that was heard at prior meeting. There was not any substantial changes council asked for at the first reading, and so we're bringing this back to you for second reading and adoption.
All right, great. Madam City Clerk, if you would conduct the second reading?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 18-2172, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Cupertino, adding Chapter 10.05 Social Host Responsibility to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Article 10, Public Peace and Morals, to deter underage drinking and drug use during events, gatherings.
And are there any questions of staff from our city council regarding the second reading? Councilmember Scharf?
Yeah, I contacted the district attorney, Jeff Rosen's office, about this regarding who would be enforcing this if it passes. So it's pretty clear the district attorney would not enforce a city ordinance like this, since there's already a state law on underage drinking and providing alcohol to minors. So I would like to know how we intend to enforce this if anyone ever gets cited for it.
We enforce this exactly the same way we enforce all of our code enforcement matters that go that way. So if somebody doesn't pay citation or appeals it, we have a process for that, and this would fall under that.
Okay, so what is the process if somebody contested being cited under this ordinance?
We have an administering hearing officer that hears the case, and code enforcement presents it, and the hearing officer makes a...
So that officer's a full-time city employee, or how does that...
The hearing officer, and as a contract employee. We have a contract for that.
So do we pay each time they conduct? And how much would the... What is the...
I'll have to get back. I don't know the exact amount that we get charged per hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council at this point? Are there any comments on this item, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor, no cards.
No blue cards, great. So we do have the reading. Is there a request for a motion? Councilmember Vaidy Nathan?
I move the ordinance number 18-2172 be read by title only under the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a request for further discussion from the council? Seeing none, let's vote with our lights.
Motion carries unanimously with Sinks absent.
Very good.
I move that the ordinance...
Excuse me, it's not unanimous.
There was a no from Councilmember Scharf. There was a...
Sorry. Would you please vote one more time? I wonder.
Sure.
I'm so sorry. The motion carries with Sinks absent and Scharf voting no. Apologize.
Great.
I move that the ordinance number 18-2172 be enacted with sincere appreciation to our team commission who are present here.
Very good. And please vote with your lights. Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote with your lights.
And the motion carries with Scharf voting no and Sinks absent.
Very good. Thank you very much. And we are on to item number 12, which is an Amendment of Policy and Procedures Manual for Administering Deed-Restricted Affordable Housing Units. I see that we have two staff members here, our Director of Housing, or the person responsible for affordable housing, as well as our Director of Planning and Community Development. So welcome, and if you'd care to, please introduce the item.
Good evening. I am here in front of you with the amendment of the Policy and Procedures Manual for Administering Deed-Restricted Affordable Housing Units, otherwise known as our BMR manual. I have a presentation for you, and then afterwards, Hello Housing, our BMR program administrator, is available to answer questions.
I think maybe pushing that blue page button in the middle of the top icons there will do it.
We're just trying to get the...
To maximize the...
Right, the PowerPoint.
Right, so that looks like a PDF, actually.
Yeah, it does.
Right, so if you open it back up again.
It's loading. So some background on our current below-market-rate program. We have 262 total units in the program, ownership and rental. We currently have 120 ownership units that are available to median and moderate-income households. We have 142 units for rental that are available to extremely low, very low, and low-income units based on their designation. I'd like to show you our new map of our BMR units citywide. This is available on the housing website. And when you click on the bubbles, it shows where the units are located. So in terms of the BMR manual, this is the day-to-day administrative manual for city staff and Hello Housing, our BMR program administrator. The manual establishes procedures for the ongoing administration of the BMR units. Annually, we look at the BMR manual to make sure that our policies are smooth and streamlined, and we offer minor corrections and edits. And tonight, I'm presenting to you policy updates in three categories. The first is improving implementation. The second is to follow regional best practices, and the third is to conform to legal standards. And if you look at the redlined attachment, although it looks like there's a lot of new policy, it's actually a lot of movement within the document to make sure that it's easy to implement. So I'd like to highlight, I'd like to highlight the policy updates. These mirror the staff report, and please feel free to ask questions at any time. So for improving implementation, in the Application Selection Process section, we've clarified that the waitlist is effective January 1st through December 31st of each year, and that current tenants are not eligible to apply. So we're basically saying there that if you already live in a BMR unit, we don't want you to apply on the waitlist to move around to another unit. In terms of the ownership units, we're simply clarifying that we will be monitoring annually that you're occupying the unit and following the city guidelines. For the rental units, in the Income Limit Section 5.1, we added extremely low-income category for the new units the city obtained at Greenwood Court. We are also adding clarification on a policy for our minimum income requirement for rental units that BMR rental properties may not charge rent exceeding three times an applicant's gross monthly income. They have different standards for market rate, and we're asking for them to do the three times for our BMR applicants. For asset limit, we're clarifying that the assets are calculated at the time of application.
The Greenwood Court units, are those the units that were being developed by Catholic charities? Or is that some other group of units?
Those are the units that were formerly transitional housing units from West Valley Community Services. And the city gave grant funding for a renovation project, and now the four units are part of the BMR program. And there's two extremely low and two very low units, so it's a fourplex.
And how did they, those two units that were in the extremely low category, how did they get into that classification?
Based on the income limits from the waitlist. So we went down the waitlist and looked at income, and the two final units are being finished up this year by West Valley.
And were they originally extremely low-income units prior to the renovations? Or did we designate them as such, as ELI?
They were outside of the city's BMR program as transitional housing units through HUD funding.
Okay.
And according to West Valley, HUD funding went away for that program, so then the city was able to obtain them as BMRs with the regulatory agreement for our program.
Okay, and I'm really glad to see the ELI designation. I'm just trying to explore the contours of how we're assigning those designations in the city of Cupertino.
Okay.
Okay. And so those were basically designations that we decided to place upon these four units that we now have. Is that correct?
They were actually proposed by West Valley. So we don't have yet in our BMR program extremely low income. So typically, they come through nonprofits like West Valley or charities that come in with a funding program.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So then, for annual recertification of income, we're clarifying that if a tenant no longer meets the minimum-size requirements for their unit, they may move to a smaller unit in the same property. So we have the one-person-per-bedroom count. And if you have a two-bedroom unit and your son moves off to college, we will put you on a list for a one-bedroom unit in that same complex that opens up.
So, oh, sorry. Do the income levels go up every year? So if someone gets a raise, they're not kicked out, or...
The income limits typically go up every year. What we saw in 2017 was a decent jump in Santa Clara County of a few thousand dollars. We do have instances where folks get promotions and they're overqualified. But it's supposed to match, it's supposed to match a normal rise in income, hopefully. And we're trying to clarify a lot of this in the manual, so staff knows what to do in these instances.
And those clarifications have to be, please consider the bonuses because we had a real issue two years ago, and we don't want to have something like that again.
Right, right. We have the income definitions of what qualifies as income pretty clearly spelled out in the manual.
Okay, thank you.
So are we the ones that specify those incomes, or does that come from the county? Or who decides those income levels?
It comes from HCD. They give Santa Clara County income limits. And then we work with those in our program. And then the two properties that are owned by West Valley, Vista Village, and Greenwood Court, they use HUD income limits, which are very similar, but in some categories, $1,000 lower.
Okay, thank you.
And those typically come out around April or May of each year. And each time there's a change in income limits, we immediately move them into the program. So for continuing on improving implementation, the requirements of the apartment owners and the property man... and the property managers, we are clarifying that they may apply the same tenant selection criteria when looking at one of our applicants, such as credit references, but they are not allowed to apply the same standards for income eligibility and minimum income. They need to look at the city's, the city's program guidelines. And then, for section six point seven, we had language in here that set a specific number for deed restrictions, and we changed this because our recent project at Charities Housing, the Veranda, I believe, has a fifty-five-year restriction, so we just wanted to let the document, let the regulatory agreement speak to itself and just have a guideline in here. So, in terms of following regional best practices, we adopted a definition of residency for Cupertino, and we worked with Hello Housing to look for best practices to deal with the homelessness issue in terms of how it impacts our program. We have strict documentation guidelines for how you demonstrate residency, and we were struggling with that with some of our applicants who are unhoused. So, we actually found that City of Sunnyvale's policy was very thorough, and so we are recommending that policy in our program. And basically, we're saying that if you've occupied or rented at least one month prior in Cupertino, and we're allowing you to have mobile homes or SRO units, and then we're further clarifying that documentation from your case manager or homeless service provider that lists your address would work for us as well. So, we've put a credit score in the program for ownership units of a minimum six sixty, and this is basically to have a gatekeeper at the beginning of the program, so when we've worked with you and you've gone through the application process, you're likely to get a loan. We want to find that out right away, so it helps turn over our units quicker when there's a sale. For asset limit, we've changed this to a limit of a hundred thousand dollars or thirty percent of the BMR purchase price. For minimum cash available, we're now requiring that of the five percent, that three percent is your own money. It can't all be gift funds. We want to show that our homebuyers have demonstrated savings. And then, we do still require the minimum five percent for the down payment and closing.
So, for the credit score, is that from any of the three credit rating agencies, or which, you're not specifying FICO score, or which score?
You know, in our, in our policy, we, in the manual, we spell it out a little further. It's the, the middle FICO score.
Okay.
Of both applicants.
Great.
For gift funds, we're putting a maximum, we're counting gift funds now towards the asset limit, and we are putting a maximum of twenty-seven percent of the purchase price. And then, for section four point four point one, we are clarifying how we're pricing newly constructed units, and we're using language from the City of San Francisco's policy. In terms of occupancy conditions, we are saying that owners must occupy the unit as the principal resident at least ten months out of the year, and that's something we verify annually in our monitoring. Pre-purchase education, instead of asking one of the homebuyers to attend pre-purchase education, we're following what other jurisdictions are doing of all adults who are going to be on title must attend homebuyer education.
So, the ten months a year, I mean, what can they do with it during the other two months? Are they allowed to rent it out, or...
No.
Why, why is it only ten months?
You know, I think we're just saying this needs to be your home base, so we don't want you, we don't want you away from your, from your home, from your unit for six months, and then here for six months, and...
I mean, if I had a guess, it would probably be tied to spring, to summer breaks, if a family wanted to go visit other family in a different part of, you know, the country or state.
Right, but they're still occupying the unit even if they're on vacation, right? It's a...
I don't know, is that considered occupancy?
I mean, can they rent it out on Airbnb for those two months, or are there any restrictions on short-term rentals?
I, I would think so if it was a BMR.
Maybe, just as a follow-up to clarify the question, I mean, without speaking...
We can clarify it, and we can, this must be a best practice typically. We've usually looked in other places to see, and we can find out if there's better language to be used.
Sure.
But usually, they say something like, for a substantial portion of the year or something, so we thought we'd just give it a number to account for, I don't know, if you're a teacher and you might be away during summer vacation.
Right.
Doing something different, but I guess theoretically, it still means occupied. The idea is not that they have to, that they're renting it to anyone. It's pretty clear that they can't rent it out to anyone.
I'd imagine there might be a part of the agreement that says that they can't, you know, use it for commercial use of some kind, I don't know. I mean, is there a provision like that in, in the basic agreement?
We can, we can look at the agreement, but I, you know, that's not in the admin manual, but the agreements, the regulatory agreements are done separately.
Oh, maybe that's a question for Hello Housing.
No, it's a good, it's a good point.
Yeah, we can ask Hello Housing to expand on that.
Thanks.
Okay. For rental units, we are clarifying that an applicant cannot own a home and/or be on title of property. Our previous manual had a first-time homebuyer clause for applicants and renters, and for the rental world, we want to make it clear that you can't currently own a home or be on title if you were a first time, you don't need to be a first-time homebuyer. That's more in line with what our neighbors are doing. And then, for, excuse me, for rental units, again, we have the head of households must occupy unit as primary residence for ten years, and we can have Hello Housing speak more to that.
Question here. Why is there difference in language where for the rental, it's called head of household, and for owner occupied, you call it all owners must occupy unit? Is there a reason why the language is different?
I imagine because you have a title document when you have an ownership, and whoever's on the title must occupy.
So, it says all owners, so you may have more than one owner?
Yeah, you might have a husband and wife, or daughter and mother, whoever's on the title of the ownership document.
Which means, in, between four point six and five point six, and also, I was looking at the staff report earlier, there seems to be a little bit of confusion in the language where in four point six, you're saying all owners must occupy, whereas in five point six, you say head of the household.
That's different, that's a rental versus owner occupied.
Because it's a rental, so you don't have owners, so typically, it's whoever's the head of the household.
Four point six refers to owner occupied.
Yeah, so I understand, so if it's a husband and wife, and both their names are on the title, you're saying both of them have to occupy that house for ten months. There could be a situation where one of them has a traveling job.
We, we would consider that as okay, but I guess what, I'm just giving you examples of what may not be okay, which is, let's say, a mother and daughter buy this house, and they're in it, but really, the mother is living somewhere else. That's not okay.
And both their names are on the title.
Right, right.
Okay.
We do have situations where we have three, three owners on a title.
And just to clarify the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
To clarify the importance of this, I mean, if there are two owners, presumably, it's a larger space, correct? So, you wouldn't necessarily want to be using a, a home that has more than one bedroom for owners, for an owner that isn't even there, essentially, to, to use that bedroom, correct?
Yeah, that's a good point.
No, I'm just trying to see if that's kind of the, you know, the policy base in town.
That's part of it, and the other is not to have owners on the title who really are not in that home.
Right.
You know, they're just there for the income eligibility or something else. They really need to be using that home as a primary residence.
Got it, sorry for interrupting, Councilmember voting.
No, so you could potentially have two teachers who don't have, who are not, don't have families, don't have children, and are single, who decide to co-own a home like that. So, you'll have both their names on the title, and possibly, they both take this exact same sixty days, and that's fine.
If they're on vacation, I guess it's okay, and we can check with Hello Housing, but really, the point of it is, this needs to be your primary residence where you're living most of the year. You know, I guess if they went to Spain for a month, that'd be okay, but they were still occupying technically the residence.
So, to clarify further, can we have language that says and cannot sublet, you know, things like that?
Yeah, we can follow up with Hello Housing.
Yeah, and it's more than just sublet, I mean, I think the goal is to make sure that the qualified person actually is using the unit. You can, you know, it could be maybe an elderly couple, you know, meets income categories, maybe their kids are, you know, doctors, quite wealthy or whatever, and they, and they go off to some other place and let their kids live there for, you know, free, that sort of defeats the purpose of the program, which is providing housing for people that are income qualified, so.
Especially, I remember we had people coming here requesting ELIs, and we really want to ensure that it goes to the most deserving candidate. Thank you.
And I can expand on your question for rental occupancy conditions. We say head of household, and we're referring to those that are on the lease, because we do have situations where households have lived in the units for twelve years, and they might have a child that's off to college now, and we're not going to penalize them or apply this rule. It's just the head of the households need to remain as primary residence.
So, should that D in parenthesis be an S, or...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And then...
I have a little bit different opinion on that.
Yeah, Councilmember Chang?
Okay. I, I think what we have is, is good enough, you know, out of twelve, twelve months, leave there to ten months. It's okay with me, I mean, if, if the teacher happened to be in the summertime, has to go work somewhere else, or do something else, and then they rent this out for two months, I have no problem with that. So, I mean, we're trying to help them, okay, for low income, and why try to penalize them on this small stuff? I, I think that makes no sense to me.
I appreciate the comment. Let's just clarify, we're going to have the presentation, we'll ask questions of staff. When we're done with our questions, we'll open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the dais for our, for our comments with regard to everything that we've heard. So, thanks very much, and Carrie, please.
Thank you. So, for the section seven, the appeal process, we wanted to follow regional best practices and recommend that our timelines of the appeal process stay the same. However, the last and final appeal will be heard by a third-party hearing officer, and that decision will be final. Now, in terms of the legal changes to our BMR manual, this manual went through review by our city attorney's office and by Goldfarb and Littman, and some of the suggestions that are in here for false statements, we wanted to clarify that false statements apply to both the rental and the ownership waitlist and application process, and then we added language in here that if you are an owner or a renter of a unit who intentionally made false statements throughout the process, that the city will treat this as a breach of resale restrictions, and we can proceed accordingly. And then, for the section six requirements of apartment owners, property managers, we're clarifying again that BMR tenants will be subject to the same conditions of tenancy as other tenants occupying the property, except for terms relating to occupancy, income eligibility, recertification, and limits on rents. So, we also have a section in there that gives some guidance to the apartment owners, and once we have our updated manual, Hello Housing will send out this version, all of our BMR property owners, and give them a timeline to review the manual and sign a signature page and send it back to us that they understand these are the new policies. And then, we have Matt Warner and Brooke Baird from Hello Housing here this evening, if you have any questions of our BMR program administrator, and I'm welcome to take questions myself.
Great, thanks very much. Are there any further questions before we open it up for public comment? Councilmember Chang?
On the false statement, for the renter, it's easier to deal with, but for the owner occupied, once they make the false statement and they own the property, it's recorded. My understanding is much harder, so what kind of, what kind of, what kind of course we can take? We can evict them?
I'll, I'll let the city attorney maybe chime in, but typically, we would go to an attorney to find out what our options are, but if it's a, if they provided false information on anything, we have the ability to, I guess, at worst case, get them out of the unit and make it available to someone else.
Can that be easily, can that easily be done?
It's never easy, but it's, it's, it's basically what, what, where it would lead ultimately.
Wendy, you have something, do you have common?
I mean, we proved up on a case-by-case basis, and I think the intent is just to maintain the integrity of the program. I don't think it's, the intent is some sort of criminal action against a person. I think it's just to have the program run for the purpose that it's meant to.
Can we put the criminal clause in there that if they're making the false statement is under penalty of perjury, something like that?
I don't know if it's possible, we probably wouldn't do it. I mean, typically, what we do, so we record deed of, deed of trust on an ownership unit, and deed of trust has all the requirements, and if they violate, we foreclose on them.
We can foreclose on them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, that sounds good to me.
Any other questions? Madam City Clerk, are there any comment cards from the public?
I have no cards.
All right, great. Well, let's bring it back up here for further discussion, then. Are there any questions of Hello Housing? There are two representatives here from the organization that coordinates our program for BMR units. Okay, well, soon...
I have a question, please.
Okay, great. Councilmember voting no.
I just wanted to know, because they're, welcome, since they've been newly, there are new group that administers this program, I just wanted to know, how has the waitlist been, has it changed since it moved over to you, and how many applications do you get? Because I remember there was one program that we had last year, and there were about a hundred and forty-nine people in the audience. They were, they wanted some form of affordable housing. I, I don't think we could have helped all of them, so I just wanted to know if there's been any change in the waitlist and how many you've been able to help.
I think that it went up a little bit this year. If I'm remembering correctly, we have a little over six hundred people on the ownership and rental waitlist combined, and that's a little bit up from last year.
And how many have you been able to help and take off the list?
We haven't, since we've started administering the program in July, we haven't had any homes come available for sale, so there haven't been any home ownership opportunities, but we have, I think, placed thirty households approximately in rental units.
And is that typical, or is that low?
That's typical.
It's typical?
Yeah.
And thirty in a year, so that means those were already BMR units where people moved out for some reason, and you were able to help thirty other families?
Exactly.
Thank you. And can you, do you offhand give us a breakup of ELIs and very lows? How many were in each category?
I don't, I don't think we have that readily available.
Okay, so if you could just send it to Carrie, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I, I can add a portion of that for the, I'm not sure of the breakdown for very low and low income, but we do have two units at ELI in the program.
And they've both been already rented out?
One is rented and one is almost done with the renovation and will be rented mid-April.
Yeah.
But it'd be just nice to know the moderate, very low, low, all of them, so...
We will get that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks very much. When the Charities Housing, you know, the, the units come online, is that also, are those also going to be administered by, by Hello Housing, or are those a separate...
So, Charities Housing is choosing to market their own project and to run their own waitlist. So, what we're going to do in cooperation with Hello Housing is to market to the city's BMR waitlist and make sure that applicants are aware that if they want to make themselves available to both of the waitlists, they need to apply to each, and just really make sure to get the word out, but Charities is managing that on their own.
And they have a separate set of criteria, including the age restriction?
Correct.
Like item, so, okay.
They will use the BMR manual as a guiding policy document unless they have to have stricter regulations from their tax credits, and so we've been working that out in the marketing documents.
Okay.
So, they have other sources of funding, such as the Measure A and, and the tax credits, so their program requirement's a little bit different.
Got it. So, I have a question of the Hello Housing representatives. How many jurisdictions do you administer with regard to their BMR programs?
Ten different jurisdictions.
Ten different jurisdictions, and do you typically see with regard to appeal rights, those being done on an administrative... 10 different jurisdictions. And do you typically see with regard to, uh, appeal rights, um, those being done on an administrative level with empowerment for final review, on being placed upon essentially staff member, as opposed to the city councils?
Uh, that's correct, yes. Um, we haven't seen another program that actually makes it up to the, the city council level for review.
Okay, so out of all 10 of the ones that you administer, um, I, I guess currently only us, um, has it going to council?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. Councilmember Sharf?
So Councilmember Chang mentioned that it might be okay if a person is on vacation for two months, a teacher, that they sublet the unit. Now, I mean, I kind of agree with that, although I would not want them making money on that deal. It shouldn't, they shouldn't be subletting it for more than the BMR rent. Um, so what is the arrangement there?
For the, uh, for the owner occupancy requirements, and actually, there's language in the deed restriction that prohibits any renting from occurring without prior approval from the city. Um, and in the city, there, there's language that they can't rent for more than 12 months in the year. But any, any renting at all, uh, needs prior consent from the city.
And that includes, uh, short-term rentals like Airbnb and?
Correct.
That sort of thing. Okay, thank you.
Well, okay, just to kind of dig into that a little bit. So when, when it says the city, that essentially means Hello Housing, correct?
If, if someone wanted to rent, uh, their unit, we would engage with Carrie at that time to make a, a decision together. Um, but yeah, uh, our recommendation typically, unless there's a financial hardship, would not, to not allow it.
Okay.
Unless staff or council had other direction.
Okay, and so your organization would then interface with city staff, who would presumably, if it were some kind of contentious or difficult? You, you know, I, I have a, kind of a, because traditionally, we like to have, you know, ultimately, final, you know, appeal rights. Um, and, and it's something that within the, um, structure, if I'm understanding it correctly, and this may be more of a question for, for our staff, within, within the structure being proposed as an amendment, um, ultimately, the, the, the person making the, the appeal wouldn't be able to appeal it further. Is that what you're contemplating here?
We talked to the various cities, and, uh, they pretty much said what Hello Housing said, which is, um, and our code enforcement runs the same way. A lot of it goes to a third-party hearing officer. They hear it, and then the next step is, um, for them to go to the court system.
Got it. And, and so who's our third-party hearing officer?
So we, we, um, I can find out, but we usually consult with other cities and Hello Housing to, um, hire an on-call qualified hearing officer.
Okay, so you wouldn't be asking anyone from Hello Housing or from our city staff to?
No, they're typically people with a legal background, sometimes a retired judge, you know. I, I can't say exactly, but a lot of them have that sort of background.
I see. Great.
And by the time they've gotten to the third-party hearing officer, they've already been issued a decision that was, um, a joint decision between the city and Hello Housing. The first level of review goes to Hello Housing. The second level comes to the community development director. And if the applicant appeals again, then it would go to the third-party hearing officer.
And, and who selects the third-party hearing officer? Is that someone from staff? Does, does the applicant have any right in, in selection? Does the city council get consulted?
Typically, the, uh, typically, the city, um, contracts with somebody who's qualified. So we would look at the qualifications and, um, and consult with, and we, we consult with Hello Housing as well.
Okay. Well, I, I, I guess just for clarity purpose, just for, um, foreseeability, it would be good to, you know, just ensure that it wasn't some kind of ad hoc process, so that we could, you know, protect our, our own, um, systems integrity, you know, so.
Very good point, yes, definitely. Um, someone with qualifications who's done this before, who understands.
Right. And, and so insofar as the request is concerned, I would just say, perhaps go back and, and maybe, um, articulate it a little bit more specifically as to, you know, who we're going to go to and how that selection is going to be made. If there's a particular arbitration service that's being used, perhaps identify it if there's a particular person. You know, I, I think even better. Um, but, I mean, I've just seen a lot of processes where it becomes a situation where, well, just someone, you know, is, is choosing at the last moment, and you kind of have, you know, questions with regard to the, uh, the neutrality. And I think that if, if we as a, you know, essentially a non-party, um, you know, have those concerns, I, I would imagine that the applicant would especially have that, that, that sense that...
Um, we can maybe go back, consult with Hello Housing, and then, um, you know, sort of give you an update of how we might go about doing that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. Are there any other comments from council?
One other question, uh, going back to Councilmember Sharf and Chang's, uh, question about the renting out, or subletting. So if, if, let's say someone does do it and, uh, Hello Housing agrees to it, would that be considered as income?
Uh, for the, for the ownership units, i- it doesn't matter. Um, you only qualify income at the time of purchase, and then, uh, we don't look at income after that.
Okay, so, so the people who are owning the houses may possibly rent it out, depending on what they agree with you. But those who are already renting, if they were further to rent it out, how would that work?
They're not allowed to sublet.
They would not be allowed to. So that, that, that was a clarification I really wanted, because they could probably make themselves ineligible with the additional income. Thank you.
Great. Any further comments from the council? If there are none, then I'll entertain a motion, um, with regard to this item.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 18 dash 024, approving amendment to the, um, policy and procedure manual for administer, administering the deed restricted affordable housing units.
Great. Can we make it subject to the comments from council?
Yes.
Great. Is there a second?
Second, subject to the, uh, council comments.
Great. Uh, please vote with your lights.
And the motion carries unanimously with Singh's absent.
Great, thank you very much. And we are now on ordinances and action items. The subject item is 13. We're considering the city council summer session. Typically, we cancel, cancel one of the meetings of the city council in either the second meeting of July or the first meeting of August. And so, uh, is there any staff report besides the encapsulation that I just?
No.
Provided? Okay. So, um, I see someone filling out a comment card, um, in the, in the public, and presuming that it relates to this item number 13. Okay, Jennifer Griffin, welcome, and...
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and, boy, this, yeah, you'd think I'd know how, whoa, okay. Um, uh, anyway, yes, you all deserve lots of vacation time. I know you need it, especially with our city. Um, but what I was going to say is because there, okay. What I'm concerned about is that if there is anything that escalates during the summer, namely, uh, I won't name it, but, you know, if, if anything starts escalating, a project that is just, some things are happening, um, and we have several of those going on, I would feel more comfortable if we didn't go, like, a whole month without having a city council meeting. There have been times in the past where the city council, uh, not you, you all necessarily, but other councils, have legitimately decided to, like, cancel both meetings in July. And then they came, you know, which is not uncommon, you know, to have vacation time. But I know there were, in the last several years, there were one or two summers where we had items of high importance that things happened while the city council was gone. And being a citizen, I really felt a need to be able to come and express my concerns during the time that the city council was absent. Um, the, so may I recommend that you all, um, if you are going to be canceling meetings, um, and let's say it was July and August, that you have at least one meeting each month, so that if there are issues. We have some high volatile projects coming to fruition in September. Um, we have some, we have the hotels, we have, well, two hotels, three hotels, we have, okay, let's name them. We have the Oaks, we have the Goodyear Tire Project, we have the Ever-present Valco. Um, and then, was there anything else going on? Um, I would feel more comfortable having you guys at least be around for some time each of those months, so that if something happened, um, because I think that a lot of those are coming up in September. Valco seems to be going full bore on its own agenda, which is fine, but we're going to meetings. But I can tell you, when I found out that the AMC Theaters had departed or been departed, I felt an immediate need to have correspondence with the city council. I consider that a high volatility in that project. I'm using that as an example. So I would feel more comfortable that we have access to you all at least one time each of those two summer months, because I can tell you, there may be high volatile projects going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, seeing no other speaker cards, I'll bring it back up to the dais, um, with that, uh, comment from the public. Uh, are there any further comments, um, and?
So it looks like even if we canceled both of the meetings that are suggested, we would still have a meeting in each month. Right? We would still have the July 3rd meeting, and we still have the August 21st meeting, even if we canceled these two meetings.
That, that is correct.
Right, so that was the resident's concern, um, that we have at least one meeting each month.
Okay. Uh, i- is there a stated preference? Councilmember Sharf?
Oh, I thought we were proposing doing both of those.
Oh, counseling both of them?
Right, I mean, I know last year I opposed it, but I may not have realized how much work there was on city council.
Thank you. Unless staff has a recommendation for only one, um, I, I can second what Councilmember Sharf just suggested.
Wait, so both, both the second meeting in July and the first meeting in August?
Uh, yeah, we, we've done that in the past. I mean, we don't, sometimes we do one, sometimes we do two. The bulk of our activity's going to occur, you know, in terms of the big projects, is going to occur after, certainly after the first meeting in August. Um, so we're not anticipating any big items coming during that period, so.
Yeah.
And any public meetings that are held for the Optico's process, Valco process, we can always attend those. Or they'll be done by then, so we won't even need to come in for those then. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Vaidyanathan. And Councilmember Chang, do you have any thoughts or comments on this item?
No, I'm, I'm going to stay around, so either we'll be okay. You want, you guys want to have a meeting, um, I'll be here. You guys want to cancel, I'll, I'll still be here, so.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
All right, great. Well, um, you know, I, I was originally going to suggest if it were one or the other, the second meeting in July made sense to me. It's, uh, same month as, uh, the fourth holiday. But, um, you know, I'll entertain a motion, uh, seeing as to how we do have, uh, two specific proposals as to both of the meetings. Um, I'm, I'm assuming that that motion would encompass both the second meeting in July and the first meeting in August, with a meeting still in July and a meeting in August. Um, is there such a motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion to cancel the July, oh, now I forgot which meeting it was.
That should be the July 17th.
July 17th and August, um...
I'm not sure what the August meeting is.
August 7th meetings.
Second.
Second. All right, please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously with Singh's absent.
Great. We're on to reports by council and staff. We're on Agenda Item Number 14, which is reports from, uh, staff as well as the city council. Uh, Mr. City Manager Brandt, are there any reports from staff this month?
Uh, I do not have any this, this meeting.
This meeting, yes. Uh, and so would anyone like to go first on our reports from council?
I can go first.
Councilmember Vaidyanathan, thank you.
Like some of our, uh, students from Deanser College mentioned, I was there at the, uh, Deanser College walkout here to City Hall, as was the mayor and Councilmember Sharf. Uh, it was very nice to interact with the students afterwards, hearing their concerns, and I especially spoke to the young lady who came here today, uh, Gonzalez was her last name, and also told her to look at our Public Safety Commission's, uh, last year's, uh, ordinance item, and I think that's why they specifically mentioned that today. So yes, I would like us to go, loo- look into that in detail and also see what Sunny Vale did, and talk to our Public Safety Commission and give some direction. It'll be very useful. Uh, I also went to Montevista High School, but I was informed there that, uh, the parents had to stay outside, whether you're, um, parent of a child or, or a resident, so I had to stay on the sidewalk. A little different, it was done a little different there. Um, I, I'm very impressed by our students and what they've taken up. I also attended a couple of cultural, uh, events. Uh, the festival, Indian Festival of Holy, uh, was held by a few organizations. I wasn't able to go to all of them because I'm just recovering from the flu, but, uh, could, could attend a few. Uh, there were a, a few community members that I met with who are unfamiliar with our Optico's process, and they happened to see it in the Cupertino Courier, and they thought it was only by invitation. So I was able to tell them that, no, it's not by invitation, it's open to all, it's open to all our residents, and I encouraged them to come to the, the next few, what were we have, which are public processes. Uh, one other, uh, request of the mayor to direct staff is our resident Tagi has come a couple of times about his ADU and garage, so if he could look into that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any takers for the next? Councilmember Chang?
Yeah, I, I would like you to look into, uh, Tagi's, uh, request, put it on the agenda, maybe we, we need to discuss and vote on it, let's do it.
Oh, great. It, it looks like those are two, uh, requests.
Yeah, so the council actually asked us to do that, um, both last year and part of the work program. So it's going to go to the Housing Commission first and to, to look at more than just that, but also incentives to, um, see if we can, um, get people to build more ADUs.
Sure.
Will that delay his particular process, the?
Um, I'm not sure what his, what his process is.
Okay, so maybe you can speak after the meeting.
Okay. And I also went to Congressman Rokana's, uh, about the gun safety at the, uh, high school, Memorial House, High School in Newark, nearby Fima. It's very interesting to learn that automatic assault weapon is banned. Only the semi-automatic is not banned. And they, they say that the gun control people, uh, well, the, the NRA is, is advocating this is a Second Amendment right, which is totally nonsense, because their automatic rifle is, is banned. And then the NRA also have a TV series, and that's why all the big company, Google, Facebook, you know, even Delta or the, the AR-9, cut the cord, because they all support it. And it, it's very interesting when, when the reporter reported into it, NRA's main purpose is making money, because they sell a lot of ammunition, a lot of gun, and also accessory, and then they do it in the, in the, on their TV about the gun, gun show, and about the need for the gun. It, it's not really for the, for the safety of the people, it's just for this profit. Which, when I learned all this at that meeting, I was really hypoglycemic. I say, oh, wow, this is, what's going on here? American system is for profit, and NRA is, is just for profit. And then they make up all kind of story, and that's why all this fake news coming along is really bad. It's come back to, you know, it, it, human decency. I mean, you got to have some kind of ethics standard to do what is right, what is wrong. And if you know clearly it's, it's wrong, it's, it's not true, you should not spread it. I mean, for the, uh, for the conspiracy group to accusing their pastor, their massacre in Austin Church, her, their daughter got killed, it's not true. It's just unbelievable. I mean, and then there's still quite a lot of follower believing in it. So, you know, I, I think we all know, know, we all ner- need to learn more about what's going on. I'm just, every time I thought of this as a Second Amendment rights issue, but until I went to, um, Newark, that Memorial Hospital, then it learned it's not really a Second Amendment rights issue. So, I don't know, I just feels, sometimes fairly sad for this country going the way it is now. Very unfortunately, you know. I've never seen it, this is my 42 years in this country and never seen something like this. People can make up the story and then tell the lie without blinking an eye. Really amazing. So, that's mine. I went over there, and none of that.
Great, great. Thanks, Councilmember Chang, and Councilmember Sharf?
Okay. On March 8th, I attended the VTA Policy Advisory Committee as the alternate, because Councilman Singh's could not go. Uh, the main topic was the bicycle plan, so I'm glad I was, uh, the person that got to go as the alternate. And they are still taking, I think for two more days. And they are still taking, I think for two more days, input on their bicycle plan. So I gave some at the meeting, I also emailed some. Specifically, my concern is that they, the bike bridge that's proposed over 280 into John Mize Park, I would like that elevated, because I felt that as Tantau becomes less bicycle friendly because of the opening of the Apple Campus 2, there should be another way to get into Santa Clara and onto the North County. And they also discussed some financial issues, the minimum boardings per bus, which would make a bus route viable. I was amazed how low that was. Someone said, you mean 15 boardings per stop? And they said, no, 15 boardings for the entire route of the bus, like from Deanser College all the way to downtown San Jose, which seems very low. On March 9th, I met with State Senator Jim Bell and two other local officials. Our main topic was SB 827, and as we know, the city at the last meeting agreed to send a letter opposing SB 827. On March 9th, I went to the South Flow Ad Hoc Committee as the alternate. This was the fifth meeting. Each meeting is almost identical. The city's request that the flight pattern be changed back to the way it was, spreading the flights over a wide area, so each neighborhood does not get all the noise. And in each meeting, the FAA says that they can't or won't do that. There'll be another meeting Friday, I'm sure it'll be the same. On March 10th, I attended a meeting of Livable Californian San Francisco. This is a nine-county group that's been formed to find affordable housing solutions. And again, the main topic was SB 827. It was interesting because it's a very diverse group that comes. You have the tenants, rights advocates that are concerned about rent control, and they oppose SB 827 because it will reduce affordable housing. And then you have the other side, the neighborhoods that are concerned about the tall buildings who are also against it. On March 10th, I also, with Mayor Paul, served as a panelist on the City Planning Forum, held in this room. It was very well attended, and it was very lively. And March 13th, I attended part of the Opticos event, and I had a conversation with them yesterday. I have to say that I was kind of disappointed at the way that event was put on. They had a lot of mistakes in their presentation, the voting system they had, they had slides where there was no viable choice to vote. They just, it was just poorly done, and hopefully they can do a better job the next time they show up. On March 14th, I was at the Deanser College March, at the end of it here, the gun violence. And, let's see, on March 16th, I met with State Assemblyman Evan Lowe, along with two other local officials. Again, the discussion was about SB 827. And finally, I've received several emails this past week, is Public Works Director Borden still here. It's regarding bicycle safety and specifically the issue of vehicles parking in bicycle lanes near schools. And I know we have the comprehensive bike plan coming up, but I just wonder, is there something we can do in the meantime to address this problem? I was thinking, if it's a bike lane that's 24/7, can we put up some of those plastic posts to keep the vehicles from parking in the bike lane? Or can we get the sheriff out there on a regular basis to do more enforcement? It's become a big concern, the cyclists have to veer out into traffic to get around the parked cars. It's almost more dangerous to have a bike lane blocked by cars like that than to have no bike lane at all, because at least when there's no bike lane, they're in traffic, they can be seen, they're not weaving in and out to get around the parked cars. So I would really hope we can do something soon to address this problem. And maybe we can pass an ordinance, first offense, $5,000 fine, second offense, you lose your license for a year, or something like that. I know that's extreme, but I think it's a real problem. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Scharf. So, unique points of contact, in the morning of March 10th, there was an event put on by our staff, as well as our teen commission, called the Yak Attack. It was a teen leadership program. It was very well attended, and it was held at the Quinlan Center, so it was really great to see. One of the winners of a Survivor season, and this was something like Millennials versus Gen X or something like that, or maybe it was the Boomers or something, but anyway, the Millennials won, and the winner from that season was speaking to this very large group of teens. So that was really fun to see, and a nice event for our students. On March 12th, I met with a group of residents from Oak Valley, they have some concerns. I will go ahead and forward that, you know, correspondence over to our city manager and city attorney for follow-up. On Wednesday, March 14th, we had a press conference for the event that Councilmember Chang is coordinating with regard to our smart cities. And it was held in this room, we had our Director of Information Technology, Bill Mitchell, here. So it was really nice to hear Bill talk about all the different ways that the city is using technology, and for, you know, something like a smart cities conference, that's a really practical, on-the-ground kind of update for what people are actually using, and especially in Cupertino. I've had a couple of press inquiries in the last month, asking me to just talk about housing in general, or at least, I limited my comments to, you know, the idea of housing. And so, you know, just, they came from the SF Chronicle in Metro, and they were good conversations, just basically spoke about the various needs in the area and, you know, policy-wise, where we're at. I do want to speak on the anti-gun violence march that came over from Deanser College over to here in City Hall. It was pouring rain a couple of hours beforehand, and, you know, I was a little bit skeptical as to whether, you know, that many students would be walking over from Deanser College, but sure enough, there were a couple of hundred marching into City Hall, and it really is an indication of how strongly people feel about the issue. I think we should acknowledge the fact that our former council member and current Foothill Deanser College Board Trustee, Gilbert Wong, was there as well. Personally, and I think we've heard this from a couple of council members already, I am open to considering the issue, and so I'd like to place it on a future agenda. There are, there was a specific request regarding raising the age of purchase from 18 to 21. And the other idea I'd like to kind of inject into the, you know, into the discussion, is that just jurisdictions in general should be granted the freedom to, you know, look at what's right for their areas. You know, and something that is very, you know, tailor-made for our particular, you know, needs. And at the same time, we do have a very high need for rational discussion. There have been a couple of really good articles written lately in the aftermath of the Parkland shooting, and just, you know, I think you don't mean Austin, I think you mean Charlotte, is that right? The church shooting?
Austin.
Austin, Texas?
Austin, Texas, the church.
Okay.
The government went in and killed quite a few people, including the pastor's daughter.
Oh, right, okay, okay. So I stand corrected. So with regard to the articles I was referring to recently, we have a call from the periodical science that we actually don't really have a whole lot of research, you know? It's been essentially defunded in the last year regarding what makes good public policy as to helping to prevent these mass shootings and murders. And I think, without equivocation, we have complete agreement, regardless of where you are on this issue, that we want to stop mass shootings and murders by gun violence. I mean, that's just not something that's debatable. And I think that it is critically important to look at any public policy from an analytical perspective, because then we can have an idea of whether what we're doing is actually effective. And, you know, I think in no other arena are the stakes higher on a personal level as to, you know, making sure that we keep our students and kids safe within the schools. And so, you know, at the end of it, I did print out an editorial from Science, I'll distribute it on the dais here, you know, to encourage people to think about the idea that we should be looking at it from more of an analytical and science-based quantitative level. I'd really like staff to go back and take a look at what makes sense, you know, whether it's, you know, a particular ordinance that we might pass, or a resolution just encouraging more of the dollars into the research. Because, you know, at the end of the day, and NPR even had a hard call, I printed out a couple of copies of that, and I'll just pass them down on both sides. But the title is "Science Provides Few Facts on Effects of Gun Policies." And so, you know, if we're really looking to, you know, cut into this problem, as with anything, it's really good to look at the data. I mean, let's try to, you know, try to analyze it, and, you know, as far as something like raising age limits, if there's really no data out there because, you know, the age limits haven't been raised, then, yeah, I'm open to the idea of considering, you know, that particular type of measure in our city, so.
Yeah, I agree with you just on that issue. Talking about data, I remember I heard on NPR talking about the federal government, the fire arm and that ATF.
ATF?
Ah, ATM?
Alcohol, tobacco firearms?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They have, they have all the data about every killing by gun, by what kind of weapon and, you know, what kind of, all those data, what I believe is in it with ATF. But then the Congress passes a law, does not allow them to publicize it. Both ATF and then also the FBI have those data about any gun violence in the United States, you know, what kind of, what type of weapon, and then all those data, okay? So maybe we can have to put an agenda, write a letter to the Congress and then to the federal government, say, please publicize those data. And the reason they don't publicize is because NRA is opposed to it. Because once people see those data, they will be clearly understand, this got to be stopped, okay? And NRA, as I say earlier, they have their own TV, their main purpose is making profit for their, for the ammunition or the gun dealer or the manufacturer, so which is putting American life under nine, it's not right, in my opinion. So maybe we can consider that.
I think the focus really does have to be on identifying the real target that we're trying to achieve, which is to eliminate mass shootings and death by gun violence. And so, you know, what I'd really like to do is to make sure that we look into these measures analytically, you know, certainly if ATF is, you know, preventing data from getting released, and that's a result of lobbying due to financial interests. I mean, there were some thoughts on financial interests as well, but I mean, ultimately, they shouldn't be getting in the way of trying to determine good public policy. And, you know, at the end of it, that's, you know, essentially our role. I mean, we're not trying to, you know, put the thumb on the scale one way or the other. You know, certainly, there is a Second Amendment in this country, you know, people do have, you know, liberties and freedoms, but, I mean, if they come at the, in conjunction with mass shootings and gun murders, I think we've gone to a point where it's just a bit absurd. And so, you know, we should be holding ourselves accountable and others to making sure that the actual problem is addressed. But so, I think we do have, you know, a clear direction to go back and look at this and bring it back to us on an item.
And one of the things that happened with what we were trying to do last year was, it was the NRA that publicized our Public Safety Commission's meeting on radio, and that brought in people who were supporting what the NRA wanted and not what our residents wanted.
Right.
So it puts our, put our commissioners in a very delicate position, having to face that kind of opposition.
Of course.
And so we, when we, whatever we phrase going forward, we have to be very careful in how we do it, and also encourage our residents to attend, and make, especially these young students who spoke so eloquently today, to be part of the discussion.
Agreed. And, you know, I have to say, the timing was pretty incredible. I mean, in terms of keeping it analytical, it is very important, you know, not to rely on anecdotal evidence and deriving generalities from specific instances. But on the day of that March, I think the day before, locally, relatively locally, in Monterey, near Monterey, there was a, there was a peace officer.
Yeah.
In a school that was showing safety lessons to students, and ended up, actually, the gun started, it ended up discharging. Coincidentally, that person's a member of his local city council as well. And it didn't get highly publicized, but, I mean, it did come in conjunction with suggestions on the national level that we should be arming our teachers. And, you know, I think regardless of what we think about that intuitively, it's extremely important that we look at this analytically, and just to really define and stick a stake in the ground to the extent that what we're looking for is an end to the mass shootings and the violence. I just don't see how that can possibly be a point up for debate, that we all want to have that ending. So, really appreciate your presence, as well as your presence, Councilmembers Vaidyathan and Scharf. Sure, go ahead.
Just add to what Councilmember Chang was saying, the shooting that happened and the pastor who lost his daughter was in Southern Springs in Texas, it's close to San Antonio.
Oh, Southern Springs, right, that's right.
Just so that we make our, we are correct here when we mention it.
Also, I was just, since you mentioned about the G50 event, I'll just quickly get a little bit discussion. I talked to Palo Alto Networks, they're coming to be one of the speaker, and by talking to them, I learned a lot from them. And learn number one, they're a number one company in the world on the cybersecurity, so, which was amazing, a new company, and bigger than their cybersecurity, their business is bigger than Cisco's security division, so that's number one. Number two, they're talking about smart terminal. And smart terminal is, the terminal can know how many people come into the terminal, from which entrance, and then also know how many people get off from the terminal and then from which exit, okay? And then the number of people coming to the terminal, they can tell the train to slow down, to come in a little bit one minute late, to pick up more people, and then take it off from their platform, remove from the, you know, from the platform, so, which is very, very amazing. And then, when then the people get in, get out of the train, when they get out of terminal, they can notify the ground transportation, the taxi cab, everybody, where did most people get out of the exit, which exit? So the taxi cab can go over there, pick up the passenger, and then go. Amazing. I mean, all this is the data, and I never thought about smart terminal can be used, so useful on that. So Palo Alto Networks is coming as a speaker, so if anybody interested, go online, it's www.g50gs cs.org, and it's $99 to buy the registration, and then if you are for the lunch, the lunch costs about $40, and if you are not for the lunch, it's $49 bucks. And then I'll give you the promotion code. If you, you get 50% off. So if you type G, after you register, type G50-dash-promote, then you get 50, okay? If you type G50-official, I mean, inactive official, you get 100% discount, okay? So one is a 50%, one is a 100% discount. So welcome everybody to come, and we're expecting a good turnout, as I say earlier, Hyperloop CEO Doug Auburn will be special guest speaker, and Stephen, Steve Westy will be a keynote speaker on how the venture capitals work in the Silicon Valley here, so.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And also on March 14th, I attended the opening of a new display at the Historical Society at Quinlan Center. That was done in conjunction with the March mixer of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, so I was very happy to see a new display. So if you'd like to see the latest from the Historical Society, go over to Quinlan. On March 16th, I'm glad that Councilmember Scharf didn't cover this, but you covered our panel. We accepted an invitation from a housing advocacy organization known as SV at Home to attend in Mountain View. And so we were very happy to be able to speak with Mayor Siegel and a number of people in that area. It's good to interact. I see the expressions from our citizenry in our chambers, but, you know, it's just good to foster the dialogue, and it's something that we did and are happy to continue to do. On Monday, March 19th, yesterday, I attended the State of the Judiciary on behalf of our city over in the state capital in Sacramento. Today, it was a real pleasure to be able to have a mayor for the day. And so, a number of months ago, the principal- And so, a number of months ago, the principal of Bethel Lutheran, Don DeBois Weber, asked me if I would be willing to auction off a mayor for the day as part of their school auction, and so that took place today. And there was a six-year-old student named Luke Bartow, who was our assistant mayor for the day today, and he and his father came over to City Hall. I want to thank city staff, you know, particularly our PIO, Brian Babcock, and our assistant city clerk and city clerk's office for, you know, swearing in our assistant mayor for the day. And so, on behalf of Assistant City Mayor Luke Bartow and myself, I would like to adjourn today's meeting until April 3rd. So have a great night, and we'll see you then. Thanks.